We call to order the City of Sagatuck City Council Workshop for May 21, 2025. Jamie, will you call the roll?
Anderson.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
James.
Here.
Gardner.
Here.
Muncy.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Stan.
Here.
We have a quorum. That takes us to any agenda changes? Okay.
I have a suggestion. I'd like to add to the agenda. The sign at Holland and Holland Street and Blue Star. I think it's worth a discussion to talk about replacing.
We, you need a motion for that?
Second.
Is that a roll call vote?
I'd like to make a motion to add that to the agenda.
And Chris, you seconded it. Jamie, is it roll call or voice point?
Voice vote.
Okay, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? All right, we will add that as discussion item 6C. All right, that takes us to public comment on agenda items only. And saying none, we'll move to approval of the minutes, which is on page two of our packet.
Madam Mayor, I motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes from May 12, 2025.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just want to compliment them on how good those minutes are. I mean, they really capture everything, I think.
Yeah, I appreciate your saying that, Chris. All right, all in favor say yes.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Discussion item 6A, updates to the Personnel Policies Manual. Before turning it over to you, Ryan, I just want to acknowledge that that was a beast of a project. So thank you for getting through that. You'd like to tee it up?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mayor. And you're right, it actually has been a pretty lengthy one. If you think about it, this manual contains really 73 different policies. So it's something that actually, kind of the spring of last year, there was some discussion about the personnel manual, and there was an initial request for council to kind of take a look and provide any feedback that you had to staff. And then during the winter months, I've kind of chipped away at working through some updates and some additional policies based on some of the feedback that we had received and my professional judgment, and then as well as what we were hearing from staff on various items too. And then legal needed to review and see, hey, you know, this was last updated in 2019. Are we still up to date from a legal perspective? And one of the items I'll touch on is a pretty significant update from some recent state law changes. But just in summary, and then I'm happy to go through any particular policies or language that you would like. We've added some new policies, disability accommodations, remote and hybrid work, longevity, which is actually something that you, the council had previously approved, I think it was about four years ago. So that's just kind of incorporating it into the manual. Artificial or AI tools, I'm sorry, artificial intelligence or AI tools, social media, and then lactation or breastfeeding policy. There's one policy that was removed or is proposed to be removed in its entirety related to personal health information. There's other laws that govern that, and that was a recommendation from legal counsel that we really didn't need to necessarily have our own policy on that and have a responsibility to kind of enforce HIPAA provisions. There's some updates to language of what a part-time employee is and offering part-time employees, depending on the amount of hours that they're working, they would receive some prorated holiday pay and paid time off under these policy changes. One of the significant updates is to the paid time off policy to be compliant with the new Earn Sick Time Act. I'm sure a lot of you have followed some of those changes as they moved through the legislature several years ago, and then through the courts, and then through some recent legislative changes. So the changes that are before you would bring our policy into compliance with the Earn Sick Time Act with the existing paid time off that we offer. For the most part, we were actually in pretty good shape and compliance with the laws, just kind of cleaning up some language as far as what the PTO could be used for, and then covering really the beyond full-time employees, making it clear that our seasonal and part-time employees will also be able to earn sick time hours as the law requires. We've updated holidays, included additional days against that, something that you as a council approved last year already, so it was incorporating those three new days into the policies. We've updated non-discrimination language throughout the manual to include gender identity or expression. The cellphone reimbursement policy has been updated to not just apply to DPW staff who have a need to use a cellphone, but to apply to all city staff that use cellphones for city business. The funeral leave policy is updated for more time for certain death events. The harassment policy has been updated to be more compliant with current law. We've updated the computer and email usage to kind of reflect more current standards. And then there's a lot of other clarifications and language cleanup throughout the document. So I think I'd turn it over to you, Mayor, and the council to go over any questions that you might have or specifics that you want to cover.
Yeah, I think we can just spend some time if people have questions. They have, I will just say, I thought you did a really good job. It reads better than it did, and I'm glad that we've incorporated new policies we needed to have and updated just some of the basics, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I put Jake on the spot to just maybe give us a run-through on how the Fahey firm kind of went through this? I'm just curious if maybe Lizzie worked on it, if she has done similar policies for other municipalities, if she consulted MML, that kind of stuff. I don't know the answer, but I just, just a little bit on how it was put together, Jake, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so it was put together exclusively by Lizzie and her team, and I'll represent to you that I am not in our firm's labor and employment group, so I had very little involvement with this. So aside from the edits that you see, I can't say exactly like what the process was that resulted in this document. I will say that we've been doing a ton of policies related to the changes in ESTA lately. So this has been, you know, some of these changes, I think, have been pretty standardized across the board. I think Lizzie is busy right now. If there are, I guess, more generalized questions about what was changed and why, I do think there's an attorney from her team that could probably join the call to discuss that with you in greater detail if you'd like.
Yeah, thanks, Jake. I don't have any specific questions. I'm satisfied with the fact that Lizzie, who is, you know, your firm's lead for HR, you know, is doing these, I'm assuming on a regular basis, as any number of the 200-plus municipalities in Michigan update their policies. So that gives me a lot of comfort that this is compliant, this is in keeping with our peers, in keeping with MML best practices. So what you've told me is sufficient for my curiosity.
Questions, Chris?
Yes, I do. I have several little ones, those aren't, I can wait on those. My question is about Section 3.5's remote and hybrid work, where it's talking about city recognizes the benefits of flexible work arrangements. And I know I was gone for a month, but was this discussed before it came here?
We discussed remote work as part of the hiring, Ryan's hiring. Council discussed that, but we did not discuss, we have not discussed it since then.
And, God, I hate coming in as the bad person, but I don't support this. I think that as elected officials and supervising government employees on the third line, public accessibility is, I think, extremely important. And I know we all have anecdotal information of people calling and saying, well, can you find out this because I can't get through, and there's nobody at City Hall, blah, blah, blah. And I don't take that into consideration. But I do think that if, if the need for hybrid work is there, then at least I would want them to be available by phone.
Oh.
No, no voicemail.
Well, I mean, it's, I'll let Ryan answer that. My understanding is that they are available by phone unless they're on the phone or in the bathroom or, you know, and then it would go to voicemail. But Ryan, do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, I think all the tools are available for folks to be able to complete the work, you know, from home in certain circumstances. We're not envisioning any of our staff working, you know, solely remotely, but I think, you know, from this, you know, management perspective today, I think with the tools that are available, I think having hybrid options available for recruitment and retention of staff is something that's definitely necessary. I would say that there's some staff that aren't going to do as well with remote or hybrid work. They're not going to be as productive, they're going to have too many distractions. Remote work isn't right for them. I think I, one of our staff team members has told me that that's not the right place for them, they don't have the space, they don't have the focus that they would need to remote, you know, work from home. I have our city treasurer, for example, who sometimes needs focus to really dive into specific details and really work through particular issues. And we have offered her the opportunity at times to work from home, to work through those particular pieces of work. So the way that it works is that we have our city laptops, which, and we have virtual private networks that allow us to access our complete city system and all of our shared drive folders, all of our software programs that are available. And if folks receive a voicemail while they're at home, they're able to review the voicemail and make a call back. So to me, I think it's a great tool that, and my recommendation is that we do offer it and we do allow it as an opportunity for our employees in a case where it works for them. But certainly, I want to make sure that we're just as productive and that we're just as responsive, and I think that staff are. But if there's concerns that you have, I'd be glad to hear them and talk.
Well, I think maybe the main one is that there's no minimum, no maximum in here. Are we talking one day a week, one day a month? What are, what are we looking at for remote work?
I think it could be either or. I think it depends on the particular staff member. I know when I was in the director of planning and zoning position, I was working remote two days a week. For some staff, it's only a couple of times a month that they may want to work from home. I know our city clerk, for example, she doesn't want to work from home. It's not something that she has an interest in. She's tried it, it's frustrating for her to do it there. So I think it depends on each employee and their abilities and what the needs are, and I think that's something from an operational perspective day to day that I have to evaluate. And it could be dependent on the time of year, and, you know, are we in tax season? Are we in a period of time where maybe it's more audit and more diving into certain details? I mean, there's a lot of factors that go into it.
I also think when it's like the roads are really terrible and it makes sense to, you know, stay safe, work from home, we have the, you know, the technological tools to make all of that happen for you or anyone else on the staff. Also sickness, sometimes it's just you just don't want to spread your germs to a small staff. Working from home makes sense. So I just, I appreciate that there is a mechanism to make that happen.
And I would never consider that something like bad roads or anything would be a reason they couldn't. I mean, those would just be something we would automatically do anyway. I think, again, I go back to the public accessibility. We're a little town, we haven't grown much, people are used to walking in and talking to their staff, and I'm just, I just have a hard time with this.
I mean, I support using technology to our advantage, and, you know, I'm just looking at Ryan's emails to the council after the terrible storm we had. You know, he was putting together emails and sent them out at 6:25 in the morning after the storm, and I know there was communication between you and Superintendent Herbert all night long. You know, so I really believe we should leverage the tools, and, you know, if suddenly your whole like night and day got blown up because you were working a problem for the city, I see no problem, you taking, having the discretion to then work remotely on a day where, you know, the sky's blue and everything's fine, you know, because you guys, you guys absolutely did a hell of a job with that storm. I'm so impressed with the entire team, yourself, Scott Herbert, the entire team at City Hall. So I think allowing them to leverage the tools is completely appropriate, and it's in keeping with what a lot of other municipalities are doing.
Other comments?
Yes, the Section 1.1 of the Equal Opportunity Policy. In the event of an alleged act of discrimination caused by city manager, the report shall be made to the mayor who will confer with the city attorney, period. I just feel that the mayor who will confer with the council and city attorney, although of course I value, you know, the important opinion of legal counsel, I feel that it's an important, something like that is so important that I feel that council should be, should be involved in that kind of discussion, whether it be in a closed session or not. Just wondering what anybody else's opinion of that is.
Just thought you'd know where that language change came from, was to the lineup with the ethics policy. So the ethics policy update laid out the process, if there's complaints about the city manager and how they should be handled, and they indicated that you should go to the mayor who will then confer with the city attorney. So that's where that language came from, but it's within your purview if you want to change.
I just feel that, you know, if we have that kind of important, you know, that kind of thing going on, I think it's something that council should all be made aware of before we make any kind of decision or move forward with our attorney.
Would that mean we need to change the ethics policy?
Maybe.
Yeah, I just, I do have some comments about the hybrid and work from home.
Yeah, I think, how about if we finish this one and then go back to work from home? And then, yeah, from now on, let's do one topic at a time would be great, so.
So I'm in support with Councilmember Muncy's comment. The mayor's position is no more important or knowledgeable than any other member of council, or simply one of seven. And if a issue were ever to come up that was a complaint against the city manager, I would suggest we have more than just the mayor be involved. Now, that could very well be a personnel committee that could be formed, could be something that would be a bit more open. It doesn't necessarily have to initially be initially to the entire council, and legal counsel obviously has at some point some input. But I agree with councilmember's concept is that that should be more than just the mayor.
So just a question on that. This is in regards to an act of discrimination caused by the city manager. The report shall be made to the mayor who will confer with the city attorney. This is a personnel matter. I don't know that, I feel like we have to be careful with a personnel matter, that's why it goes straight to the city attorney.
Or maybe it goes to the mayor, to the city attorney, and then other council members as appropriate, because it might be, you know, something that is unfounded, and then there's no need to go further.
Just, yes, I think the city attorney needs to investigate it before the rest of council has. I mean, Jake, how do you feel about that?
Real quick though, one of the things that kind of, you know, brought up, brought to my attention was with our last city manager, and I feel like I was in the dark a lot about what was going on back when they were, he was having personnel problems with our last manager. So I just feel that it's fair for all of us to be in the, in the know.
And to, I think maybe from my mind, yes, it is an HR issue, potential HR issue. The manager reports to the council, not to the mayor. So in essence, we are the managers of the manager.
Totally get that. The reason why when we did the ethics policy, we did it that way, was to have it be, it's sort of the, are you familiar with the Kitty Genovese story? It was this classic textbooks, woman was getting stabbed.
Seventy-five years ago.
And.
It's just an example, so don't be rude.
If there's an emergency and, you know, and there's a crowd, people don't know, often no one takes responsibility. And I think one of the issues that might have happened with the last mayor, or not the last mayor, the last city manager, is that there was not, people didn't exactly know what to do, and then no one felt empowered, I think, to go to the city attorney. So.
The city attorneys were contacted.
Right, but I think earlier in the process, it's just like, well, who am I supposed to go to? Do I go to any council person?
So now it's spelled out more directly in the ethics policy and then here.
So that's why we changed the ethics policy, yes.
Madam Mayor, I would ask that Councilmember Stanton, or excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem Stanton, if she says, don't be offensive, that she direct that comment to the mayor?
So you were saying that was 75 years ago, as if her point wasn't a valid point to be made? Let her make the point.
Then please make that to the mayor, not just under your breath. Councilmember Stanton.
I had a microphone in front of me and I said it out loud.
Okay, so, so on the thought of where that should go, what are other people's thoughts on the, if we change that? Or Jake, do you want to weigh in on that at all?
So again, with the mild disclaimer that this is not my primary area of practice, I would just note that, you know, the council as a whole would be required to actually administer any discipline for the manager or take any official action with respect to the manager's employment. So it, I guess at one point or another, if the process continues, it would be in front of the council. But there's, I mean, I think you have to arrange for a council meeting, you have to put it on the agenda, and then to have a closed session in something like this, it's only if the person being complained of requests a closed session. So that's a lot of, and not to downplay the importance of, you know, these kind of complaints, but it's also a lot of public maneuvering that would have to take place before something like this could be brought to the council. And so maybe as a first step in the reporting process, having it be less than a quorum of the council, you know, the city attorney or the mayor, or whoever have you, that might give a little bit of additional, I think, flexibility and discretion in how to handle something like this.
Madam Mayor, was that, was that a yes? That it'd be okay to have somebody else there? Were you in agreement with what Councilmember Muncy was saying?
Which was what?
Greg.
Yeah.
To have somebody else, mayor and, and city council.
Right, mayor and city council. I just felt that, yeah, that that would be a, yeah, mayor and city council. Again, mayor has no other, you know, powers according to our bylaws than council. So if there's something that important coming up, it should be to the attention of all of council, not just the mayor.
So any other questions before I sum up where we are?
Like more of an observation, but I really think the, you know, the key entity that we want to rely on when there are serious personnel issues is the city attorney. I think the city attorney is the most critical individual to determine if the allegations may, you know, violate, potentially violate policy. And I also think anyone that's accused of anything has the right to due process and the right to their own counsel. So I think these are the key things that I would be looking at if we were going to make any type of policy change, to make sure that if it's simply the mayor that, you know, takes these in per the ethics policy, you know, that the city attorney is there to advise the mayor. So once again, I think, I would not be in support of a subcommittee or a personnel subcommittee, and it either really has to be the mayor relying on the expertise, and this is heavy reliance, I would say in this case, on the city's attorney or the council as a whole. But once again, it's almost like you're having a trial for somebody in closed session with the full council. And, you know, I know we all take an oath and we all abide by closed session, but, you know, suddenly a single individual makes a claim against somebody, and suddenly seven council members hear about it, and it's proven to be untrue, or the lawyer advises us that it's simply not a violation of any law or policy. These things have the tendency to get out, don't they? You know, in a way that's discriminatory potentially, and really kind of undermining an employee's right to be treated fairly and with due process. I think, I think the mayor working with the city attorney provides the right amount of oversight combined with discretion.
But, if I may, real quick, but there's no guarantee whoever the mayor is wouldn't speak in public, just like there's no guarantee any of us wouldn't speak in public about a private matter, so.
Yeah, I think, so I think one thing we might be losing in this unintentionally from the ethics policy, it's, it's so, the complaint comes to the mayor, the mayor talks to the city attorney, presumably talks to the employee just to say, hey, you know, we've had a complaint, what's going on? And if it, if it seems like there are legs to an issue, then, I mean, of course, council would be involved.
Is that in the policy here?
Pardon?
But would that be in the policy here?
We could maybe tweak the language or edit the language to be clear that this isn't to avoid, I think, to avoid involving council, obviously council's, you know, critical stakeholder, but to kind of keep the initial evaluation tighter, just to be fair to the employee. And, but if there's an issue, obviously council would have to be involved.
This is what I'm driving at, Mayor, is I really think the mayor has a duty to immediately, you know, involve legal counsel, who I think we all agree, you know, is not going to jeopardize their reputation. I mean, I think what we're kind of hinting at here is, is a mayor might not act or take something seriously that others think is serious. So I think with legal counsel who is not an elected official, who, you know, who's highly trained and also has their own firm's reputation to look out for, is going to advise the mayor appropriately and under the law. So I think that's the proper way, because once again, I think everyone has a right to due process and being treated fairly. And suddenly if, you know, someone has yelled "smoke" in a crowded theater, in this case, seven council members, you know, it is going to potentially disparage an employee who's done nothing wrong.
Well, the mayor?
Yes, yeah, and to follow up on that, to respectfully disagree, a lot of people yelled "smoke" at the previous city manager, nothing was done. So I think there needs to be some kind of stopgap there, and it can't just be mayor to the city attorney. I mean, there's got to be something else. I don't know if you want to do it head of department, mayor pro tem, whatever, but it did, this didn't work last time.
I respectfully disagree.
Yeah, and I think what, go ahead, Joe.
I was just going to say, I mean, I'm kind of playing this through in my mind, right? And there's going to be potentially situations where, to Council Dean's perspective, right? I think that he's right on point, right? You're not going to want to blow something up that, A, you want to get the legal counsel involved, and probably minimize, in my opinion, right, and minimize the number of individuals involved until you get to a point in which you determine that there may be some, you know, behavior that's inappropriate, right? And I think at that point in time, to your point, right, that any reasonable mayor is going to brief the council because there's going to potentially be an action that's necessary. So I kind of, as I'm playing this out in my mind, I'm thinking there's, this is, how far do you want to take the policy? Because if you're mandating that anytime an issue comes up, the mayor has to brief legal and brief the council, you're kind of, I agree, you're opening up to potentially things getting out, and you're potentially making a bigger deal out of something that hasn't yet at least passed the sniff test, right? So on the other hand, right, I can see an opportunity where if there is a legitimate issue out there that the mayor, and I can't imagine a mayor not doing this, would want to involve council because that's why we're here, right? So if you're going to tweak things, right, which maybe that's going to make people more comfortable, you know, maybe put something in that at a time deemed appropriate by the mayor, or if there's found allegations or whatever, council will be brought in and briefed, you could do something like that. But, but I don't think mandating that every time there's a personnel issue, potentially, potential personnel issue that the council has to be briefed, then you're putting it into both the ethics policy and our, and our operations guide, how we operate as a team, enforcing it. I, that just doesn't, doesn't feel right to me. I don't think it's necessary.
You know, I'm not looking at so many scenarios as much as I'm looking at our bylaws that says the mayor has the same power as everyone else, as all people on council. And it seems to me that gives the mayor a little, you know, more leverage or more, you know, more responsibilities or, you know.
The mayor does have a lot more responsibility. The mayor is involved with many meetings that the full council is not involved with, so.
How about we, since we.
So I just wanted to add one more thing here in looking at this a little bit more. And again, I want to apologize to the council that I'm not more familiar with this policy. But, but just so that everyone is on the same page and understands what this provision applies to, this is a complaint, I would assume, from another employee or city staff member about conduct of the manager. And so maybe something to keep in mind is the potential chilling effect that it would have requiring that individual. that it would have requiring that individual who wants to make a report on the manager file that report with the entire city council rather than just a single designated individual. I think it's a separate question as to what the, the mayor does with that information once a complaint is received by her. Then, then perhaps maybe the, the initial burden that we're placing on someone who wants to make a complaint about the manager as to where they have to report that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I appreciate this topic coming up. Just good reading from the proposed policy. In the event of an alleged act of discrimination caused by the city manager, the report shall be made to the mayor. And I agree that that is compliant or in line with our ethics policy. I think the concern that I'm hearing, and I experienced this, is that if a report were made, the mayor, in my opinion, should not be the sole person making a decision about whether it's should be in conference with the, with the city attorney who presumably has experience in this, but we need to be, especially related to the city manager alone, we need to be made aware that there's a complaint that's been filed. If we can go into closed session to talk about legal cases, if we can go into closed session to talk about HR issues, I have a responsibility to keep things respectfully quiet when it comes to situations like this. So if there's a concern that I'm going to spill the beans or someone else is going to spill the beans, then that's a problem. What this is, and I agree with Councilmember Muncie, what I'm looking for is when the mayor who's ever sitting in that seat, and I've sat in that seat and I've been in these situations, what is that, what is my expectation of the mayor to make me aware of what's going on? I do not want the mayor to have a, an authority that the mayor doesn't have to make a decision about a complaint without, because there may be a different perspective on it.
So in the past, just, so you all, just to recollect, Lizzie made individual phone calls to each and every one of you, which was really, it was fantastic because I thought, you know, she did a great job working through personnel issues over the years. And when I was in the role of mayor and if I received anything, going to the city attorney, you know, our employment attorney, and every single individually council member was called. So what I'm saying is you can trust our attorneys to reach out to you and have those conversations and reach out to you individually because that is how I've seen it done in the past.
How about, I guess, you know, we don't need to approve this on Monday. Why don't we get some time with Lizzie? And because we did talk about this in pretty big detail on the ethics policy. So I, you know, I just, I would like to hear her perspective, maybe she's, you know, familiar with how other municipalities are handling this. I, I hear, I mean, I, I understand the point.
And, and real quick, that's a lot of stress on you too, or whoever the mayor is, you know.
I, I, yeah, I-
But I saw a lot of stress with the, with what had happened before as well.
Yeah, I, I think we'd benefit though from, from Lizzie's counsel. And I do think there is something, we have to balance the chilling effect of if a disgruntled employee has a bogus charge. I think having to bring that to all of council is, I just don't know that that's fair to the city manager. And yet to, you know, our taxpayers, ourselves and staff, we do owe it, you know, to all of us to handle things in a proper way. You know, in some situations, people would just go to the city attorney. I know in a corporate setting, and we are not a corporate setting, and I don't want us to act like we are. But there, you know, there are hotlines where people can, can make reports. And so maybe we consider people, you know, if they're not comfortable going to the mayor or if going to the mayor is not effective, then they should contact the city attorney. But let's involve Lizzie if you're amenable to that, so that we have the benefit of the council.
I do remember when we had problems with the past city manager, there were folks that were afraid to go to the mayor at that time that did speak to some of us on the street. You know, so, so again, you know, and-
And again, we, we did hash out, I mean, I will just remind us, we hashed out a lot of this in specifics in closed session when we could talk more openly about those issues. And if we need to do that again, so that we can kind of go through point by point, issue by issue, you know, we can, if we need to do that with Lizzie, so that we can get into detail. I mean, we need to feel comfortable that we have a good policy. I, you know, I have thought, I thought this was a good solution, but open to getting her feedback on the feedback you're giving.
I support bringing Lizzie into this discussion. Once again, I think she is the crucial resource here. You know, we have a, we have a very, I think, very good law firm that has a breadth of experience, that has attorneys that specialize in these matters. You know, we are not big enough as a municipality to have a human resources person.
Right.
You know, we don't, we unfortunately can't, you know, hire an HR rep. So we do have to lean on, on outside services. In this case, it's outside council that specializes in human resources law. I mean, look at, look at the red lines on this. This has brought us back up into kind of, you know, the current thinking around these very, these very difficult issues.
Right. Well, then any mayor would be, I mean, I mean, that's the first call, so.
Yeah.
Is, are people comfortable with that? Okay, then let's, then let's go back to-
Real quick, in the, in the interests of the, the council's time, I, I do have a senior associate who works with Lizzie, who can probably be available in the next couple of minutes if we still want to tackle this at this workshop. I don't know if he directly did all of the work or if it was Lizzie, but he's certainly pretty qualified to answer those questions.
Yeah.
If council wants to put it off until we can arrange to have Lizzie here, that's totally fine.
Well, yeah, if I may, Mayor, I think, you know, Lizzie has, you know, there's been a lot of comments this afternoon on past issues. Lizzie's been at the forefront of almost all of them.
And she, we had this discussion-
And I think she can help maybe, help folks understand that, you know, she's been involved in everything from discussions over our city managers to staff at Oval Beach. So she has dealt with a wide range of HR issues for this municipality. And I think she's done a hell of a job handling them appropriately, so everyone was treated fairly and with due process, which I think is really key here. So I, I would be willing to wait for Lizzie to, to walk us through this, to make sure we are complying
Thank you.
and everyone is being protected and treated fairly under the law.
I agree, Scott. I'd like to talk to her too.
Ethics policy as well. So if you're okay, I mean, I think, Jacob, it would be good to just be, have the continuity with her.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I'll be sure to coordinate with her and she'll be at a workshop soon.
Thank you, Jacob.
Of course.
Okay, so back to remote work. So we've heard from Chris. Joe?
Well, to me, the first question is, do we want to allow flexible working environment? I support that, right? I think there's lots of reasons for it, right? I mean, you could have somebody that's immobile that has to perform a job, right, and what have you, right? So if, if you support it, then the next question is, do we have the technology that allows for it, right? And I think Ryan did a good job of answering that. It's been my experience, however, when you're defining policy for work from home, that's where things can get a little challenging, right? I mean, you have really three dynamics that you have to consider. One is the role of the job, right? Does it even allow that, right? Two is, then there's the people that come into, some people just don't work well offsite, right? Some people can't be trusted, so on and so forth. Then the third dynamic is the manager, right? Does the manager have the ability to see through all this? And so putting that into a comprehensive policy that completely puts boundaries around things can actually work against you, right? There may be situations when you want somebody to have an extended time working remotely because they're injured or whatever the reason is. So if you put in a policy that says we have a max of five days or whatever, right? Now all of a sudden you're out of policy, right? Same thing on the minimum. Then you get into the entitlement, right? Well, the policy says this, so I should be able to do it. My point is, is that if we're going to allow the flexible work environment, it really comes down to do we trust our managers or not, right? To be able to see through all of those dynamics. And I, and I, and I, I do, right? I think, I think it's too difficult to put boundaries around a policy and something like that. I think if we see issues, right, as we go, we can, we can make some modifications, but, you know, the way I see it is, you know, let's give our manager the opportunity to run the city the best way he sees fit. And so far, he's proven that he's done a good job. So I'm good with it.
Madam Mayor?
I would like to say the, appreciate the, the three dynamics. My dynamic is how does it affect the public? I appreciate that, that we have the top of the line technical means to do this and everything. But again, we're here to represent our public. How will this affect them? Are they going to be able to have the same public accessibility? What if they walk in? How is that going to be affected? So that's where I'm coming from. I think the dynamics that you talked about are excellent, and I would have no problem with anybody if there's a sickness. I think that's covered in there. If you have to take care of somebody or the roads are closed or something like that. I'm talking about the ability of our public to access our staff when they need them. That's my hope.
And I think you're right. That's, that's why I say, can they do their job? Can the job be done remotely, right? There are some jobs that can't be done remotely.
But again, that would, that would be under the discretion of our manager, right? Wouldn't he be able to make that decision?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think there is a natural, so everything Joe said was said better than I could have said it. I think this, what I would add to that is, is, you know, if Nikki is home working on the budget. And, you know, I really think it's critical that people who have high focus work be able to have space to do that without the interruptions and the noise around them, which I love this policy for that. So to answer the question, if somebody walks in and says, I want to see your treasurer, obviously our treasurer wouldn't be there. But I am certain that there would be somebody else there who could, you know, could, if they needed to talk to Nikki that day, I mean, and if they walked in expecting to see Nikki, you know, could have Nikki return a phone call, or they could answer the question, it was supposed to drop off a tax payment. You know, Sarah can take that. So I, I think, you know, the workplace, so it's a balance of the workplace has changed. If we don't offer flexible work options, we really shut the door on, you know, a portion of the workforce for whom that's valuable. And I think it's been working well. I mean, I, you know, I, so I, I support the policy. Russ?
Yeah, so I work in a hybrid environment. Many of the people I work with have not been in the office since COVID. And there are certain positions in my organization, which I think we have to talk about here too, that are never eligible for work from home unless it's a very unique situation. The, the flexibility that work from home has allowed someone like myself, I do better in the office, so I go to the office. But where the work from home comes in helpful for me is tomorrow. I've got to serve breakfast to the seniors at school and, and so I'm able to work from home tomorrow to be able to meet a family responsibility. I'd like to see that flexibility be offered to city employees, but not, here's the challenge. My job does not involve sitting at a desk for people to come in and talk to me about city business. My, my job involves a lot of files and a bunch of other stuff. So I think we need to think very carefully, and I think Councilmember Peterson and Councilmember Clark have said similarly that it depends what your role is. And from my perspective, because we're a small team, I'm not going to, DPW is kind of a different beast. Everybody that works in this building is, their first job is working with residents and customers that walk in the door. And we need to be available for that during business hours. We have to meet that basic expectation. Now, that can certainly be, as discussed, it can be rotated, you know, for instance, someone comes in to make a payment, certainly Jamie can take a payment or, you know, Sarah presumably, or even Ryan could take a payment from a, from a, from a citizen. But it's a very basic, we have to meet the expectations of our residents and taxpayers on what they expect City Hall to do for them. Meeting that expectation is the basic first step. Now beyond that, what my organization has done, there's two things. One is there are certain positions that are exempt. You cannot work from home. I would say the city manager is not an eligible position. That position is because it's managing staff and is really for the service of our public needs to be here. Now, there can be exceptions, of course, where there's times where they may have an appointment at home or a personal appointment, those can be managed. But I think the general expectation is that the manager is here. So as I look at the city employees, the DPW and superintendent would never be eligible for work from home. You literally can't do public works from home. The clerk, I know that you've said that the clerk does not want to work from home, would prefer to work, work, work here. I think the clerk would be a position that could potentially be eligible for this. Planning, same position, could be an expectation or could be an allowable treasurer, as we've discussed, and the deputy clerk. So is there anybody I missed in terms of, except for DPW and the superintendent, is there anybody I've missed that works in City Hall or, or have I covered everybody except for contractors? Have I missed anybody?
Just, I mean, just to clarify, I guess, a couple of things there. One, there, there may be times that the public work superintendent may have an opportunity to, to work remotely on a particular day if he's working on, you know, certain administrative tasks or duties. As it relates to me, as the city manager, I have a separate employment agreement with you that, that offers me that flexibility. It's quite clear in the agreement language, so this policy wouldn't exempt me from, from that. I think my employment agreement covers that separately. Look, I, I feel like there's a little bit of a, a thought that we're somehow not wanting to provide good customer service or that we're not providing good customer service.
No, no, that's what I'm coming from.
It's, 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 you know.
Not at all.
We always have somebody here that are available to, you know, to talk with folks. We wear a lot of hats here at City Hall. Our staff wear a lot of hats. There's a lot of cross training. I mean, you know, one of the pieces when Peter, you know, left last year, I mean, Jamie and Sarah stepped up in tremendous ways to learn the, the treasurer and finance officer duties. So that's led to other opportunities to be able to, you know, support Nikki and her role when Nikki's not here. And I guess I would even say that even if our staff are here working on a particular day, it doesn't mean that they're going to be just always available to whoever walks in the door. Like, that's not a realistic expectation. We have meetings. You know, if Nikki's busy, needs three hours of focus time to work on the budget, she has a right to that. And we're going to, you know, defer customers to, to other folks. And so my expectation is that we're timely in getting back to folks. So if folks call, that we're getting back to them timely. If folks need an appointment, that we're scheduling that and getting those opportunities for folks to, to meet one-on-one and providing great customer service. And I, I'm not hearing a bunch of complaints along those lines. If you're getting complaints along those lines, I'd like to know so we can make sure and address it here. But I think all of our, our team members go above and beyond to really provide great customer service. I think even in a remote work environment, we can still talk with folks and provide great customer service. We have a lot of residents here who are snowbirds and are in other, you know, states. And we make time to, to meet with them and talk with them about projects, even via, via Zoom, not necessarily in person. So there's a lot of ways that we service folks. We're going to provide good customer service. We've been using remote work opportunities. It's worked. I'm not aware of any issues. I guess that's, that's where I would be, but.
Yeah, thank you very much, Ryan, for mentioning that. My comments are not coming from a position of criticism. It's what's going to work for a small city staff and literally those one, two, three, four, five, six positions, which are really in play. The other thing that my organization does, and I think the city has to give serious consideration of this, is to implementing a tool. We use Teams, Microsoft Teams, to enable people to communicate effectively and quickly and efficiently, whether it's either through voice, chat, whatever. I mean, if you don't use Teams, I don't even know if the state uses Teams, the Councilmember Dean, yeah. It is absolutely critical in order to enable this type of approach to even work well, in my experience. So if this, and I don't think the city has Teams or there's other tools out there that's, do we use Teams?
So we have Teams. We don't utilize it in that way because we are a small working environment, so it doesn't, you know, we don't have them, messaging somebody that's sitting next to us, and I wouldn't want our staff, you know, doing that. If somebody's at home, frankly, I'd rather the text or call to have that, that direct communication as well, but,
you know.
It is a tool, and it can be a great tool. When I worked for the state, it was like Skype at the time for, for business and you're messaging on, but.
Yeah, and, and literally, I just speak from my own experience. Could not do what we do as an organization without Teams, and I think even with a smaller group, it's even more critical that there be that tool in place and be utilized effectively, so people are communicating without having to use text messages and things like that, which are not secure. Teams is, so anyway, that's the other thing I would suggest is that we have very specific things in place to make sure that teams, that people can communicate effectively and efficiently. And you also mentioned in the policy, or was mentioned in the policy, in terms of eligibility. They have demonstrated the ability to work independently and meet performance expectations. So that, we don't necessarily need to get into that today, but do we have clearly defined work expectations for individual employees? I have mine at work that I have to meet in order for me to be able to work from home, as do many of the employees that work for my organization. So that's something I think where's further discussion. Do you feel comfortable that you have those work expectations and performance expectations down? And so it's a agreed to responsibility for both that you meet those before you're given that.
My last comment is this was not intended to say that the staff is doing a wonderful job. We don't want it to change. I don't want it to change.
Thank you.
And so I'm a little leery of anything, maybe-
I feel, I feel like we've heard pretty much from everybody.
If I may, just one thing. I just, I just am really glad I-
If I may, just one thing. I just I just am really glad I appreciate my my counterparts across the table for acknowledging that our manager is indeed accessible and is indeed doing a great job. I would caution all of us, though, that if we do create a hard line on remote work, that maybe our next manager might say, when we have a terrible storm like we did, trees down, I'll I'll be available as soon as I get to the office at my normal time. Ryan did not do that. Ryan used the tools. He worked remotely successfully along with Scott Herbert. For me to be able to pick up my device at about seven thirty in the morning and see exactly where all the trees were down, so I could communicate to my constituents, my neighbors, where they were, allowed me to go go see Andy and Jean, make sure they were okay, because he was working remotely. He did it, like, maybe we might get some manager that says, you know, this is great, the way Sagatuck operates. Once five o'clock comes around, I'm done, I'm gone.
Right.
I'm gone.
I'm gonna bring, I'm gonna wrap this up. I feel like people, we've, I've, good discussion, good perspective. Let's just kind of do a little show of hands. I'm comfortable with the policy as written. I think it gives parameters to the city manager to wisely manage the team and, you know, making sure that we're appropriately staffed onsite. And that, you know, people have flexibility as appropriate for their jobs. So I, my guess is, so if if those who are comfortable with how it's worded, just like maybe wave their hand, okay, then I think we go with this version. Since we have a majority supporting how it's, and I think, you know, if it's not working, we need to let Ryan know. And, you know, it's his job to make sure that staff is productive and, you know, meeting their objectives and being accessible and giving good customer service. So. Okay.
And Mayor, I just want to finish up by saying thank you. This is a lot of work, and I should have started off by saying thank you. I can, I appreciate the amount of effort goes into this. I've done these myself, so I can really appreciate the effort. I do want to say thank you to Ryan because we've had some conversations about how artificial intelligence is being utilized by municipal governments. I share some examples with him. So I really appreciate getting that in because that's something that's that's progressive, and I think that will show well to people who may be considering the city of Sagatuck as a place to work, as well as a social media policy, something we talked about as well. So I thank you for listening. And, you know, we don't have to get perfect here. We just want to get good, and then we can continue to adjust as we move forward. So thank you.
And real quick, yeah, I just want to say I'm not totally uncomfortable with it with it, you know, I I might have the weekend to think about it as it is. I just want to make sure that we have we have a line or or whatever. I understand the privacy of going to the man or going to the mayor. Again, I'm not foreseeing any problems as much as, you know, I I just want, you know, equality and 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 I just don't want too much on you or whoever the mayor is. I saw that there was stress on the mayor when we did have an employee issue a couple of years ago. And I thought I thought it was a lot for the mayor to have to go through. And that's that's that.
We'll benefit with that with a discussion with Lizzie. And what is great for whoever's in this mayor's seat is that she's a great advisor.
Yeah, it would have been nice to have had her here today.
Yeah, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, who knew?
Right.
So other parts of the policy, questions, feedback? Great. Thank you, Ryan. Administrative project coordinator position, which is on page one twenty-five.
Real quick, that sample motion at the bottom, was that a typo?
Yeah, and I had changed that. I was like.
I check stuff.
Yeah, right. So thank you for, yes, catching my, Jamie noted that to me today, too. I'm like, I know, it's so weird that it's.
That's what happens when you start using AI, that's what's going to.
Yeah, there you go.
So I didn't, I didn't with that, you know, so. But yeah, we'll get we'll get Lizzie to a future workshop to to finalize that process that relates to complaints about the the city manager and then if there's any other feedback that you have in the meantime, please, please let me know. So.
Actually, before we do that, if we changed it to city man or the mayor and mayor pro tem, so there were two people, would that make people feel more comfortable? Or do we want to get, I mean, I I still think we'd benefit from Lizzie.
It would for me.
But it.
It would for me.
It would for me.
Are you comfortable? I mean.
Well, that's.
So it goes to two people?
And the lawyer.
And the lawyer. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be very comfortable with that. Yeah.
Okay.
That's a decent compromise.
Yeah.
I, you know, and if somebody feels like the either one of the, I mean, surely one of them will realize, you know, we got to take this seriously, talk to counsel, legal counsel, and then figure out how to involve counsel if.
Nice, nice move.
If it's necessary.
That works.
Yeah, that works for me.
Great.
I'll run that by Lizzie.
Okay.
And from my perspective, I I know the the, I think the ethics policy requires, you know, reporting to the mayor. So I think just adding the mayor pro tem in addition to that, it doesn't necessarily contradict it. So
Okay.
I'm pretty comfortable with it. So unless she has an issue with it, we should be all set there.
Perfect. Thanks, Jake. And if if we need to tweak the ethics policy, you know, get there, her to wait, and then on if we're jamming us up with that the ethics policy is different.
Sure.
Okay. Awesome.
Sure, we'll be able to hear back from her tomorrow sometime. She's pretty responsive. So assuming she's good with that, we we'll make that change, and then we can actually tee this up for you next week. And just to clarify, remember, Monday's Memorial Day.
Oh, right.
Tuesday can be your regular meeting next week. Yep.
I mean, I tell you the truth, I can't foresee that happening, you know, with our mayor or with our our manager. I just don't see that happening.
Right. But hopefully we'll live beyond.
I'm thinking twenty years down the road. A lot of times when I think about something or I have questions. You know, that's usually what I think of when I ask a lot of questions. It's not about necessarily.
Probably, maybe not. Yeah. I can only live, I think, afford to live about twenty-two years more, so.
Lucky if I get another ten.
Okay, so back to, back to the new hire.
All right. Yes, so so this was something that was kind of, I think, discussed with a previous council and a previous, you know, city manager, that there was kind of a an identification and discussion and a, you know, a couple strategic planning sessions ago, that there there might be a need for some additional staff support here at the city. And so some dollars were included in the fiscal year budget a couple of years ago. I know the previous city manager was kind of starting to to work on that. We had a city manager change. I came in as the interim. Obviously, I wasn't looking to make any big, you know, staffing changes until there was a decision by you on who the the manager would be. And then we obviously have added two new department heads since that time, and have wanted to take time to really kind of evaluate them and their the skill sets and strengths and what the the operational needs are. And so we did include an additional position in the fiscal year, this fiscal year's budget. We've gone throughout the year. We haven't filled it yet, but I think we're really at the point where really ready to make a recommendation that that we move ahead with with filling. Originally, we labeled it as kind of like an executive assistant slash project coordinator. But looking to make a few tweaks to that. So as I've talked to all of our, you know, city hall department heads and really the workload that that's on everybody's plate and everybody's kind of feeling of, frankly, at certain times feeling a little overwhelmed with everything that's going on and wanting to find a way to, you know, support our our city hall department heads. And then obviously, in talking with Scott Herbert, who had kind of a, both Jamie and Scott had a just got partial administrative assistant kind of added to support them a few years ago. Hasn't always maybe worked as everybody had intended. It's it's challenging for an employee to sometimes have two different supervisors. And then we've tried some things with the employee. Sarah, in this case, working in two separate locations with dedicated hours, but then there's some of its crossover between the duties. It's it's presented challenges. And then if you have time off and then certain hours are reduced for for one or the other. And so it's presented a lot of challenges, hasn't worked completely as intended. And so my, what we've been piloting lately has been kind of some some shifting of of duties and really seats here at City Hall to where Sarah's kind of been given more specific job duties that she knows are hers and that she owns every day instead of this kind of tasks sometimes that are kind of passed her way, which is certainly part of her role and going to continue to be. But the more she has, you know, dedicated responsibilities every day, then it helps her kind of plan her days. And then Jamie, kudos to her, but she was really this huge point of contact for so many phone calls and so many walk-ins, being that first window to where she's is constantly being pulled into so many other things and hasn't been able to focus in on on some of the the things that she's responsible for. And and so that's concerned me for some time. And so we've kind of piloted making a switch with with Jamie and Sarah kind of switching desks. And so far, we've we've been doing that for the last few weeks, and it's gone well. And so the other things that we worked with Sarah and kind of also supporting the rest of City Hall on are being kind of that first point of contact for payments as they come in, whether it be eventually it'll be tax payments, too, but like old beach passes right now or payments for permits. As far as supporting Luke, there's sometimes some really large mailings that have to go out for public hearing notices, and those take a considerable amount of time to literally stuff envelopes and and send them all out. So Sarah's available to assist with that. And so with Sarah kind of moving to that seat and also providing some assistance for for Luke, providing some assistance for for Nikki and really City Hall. She's still helping Scott to the extent that she can right now, especially on some some of the beach matters with ordering and and scheduling and that that sort of thing. We still have kind of a need to backfill either part-time administrative support for the Department of Public Works or given the current, you know, administrative workload and really the project workload of the Department of Public Works, I think, you know, somebody who's dedicated to just supporting the Public Works Department right now with everything that they have going on is really the direction that that we should go. And so it's something that, you know, I have discussed with all of our department heads. I've discussed it with Scott. I've went over job duties with Scott. Scott's, you know, reviewed this job description, and we've also had some discussions about where this person will sit and and how that'll work at at Public Works. But looking at at hiring an administrative kind of slash project coordinator, somebody that would help provide support in in both of those particular areas, be dedicated to Public Works, phone calls are coming into City Hall for public works related matters would be kind of transferred out to this person to be kind of a first point of of customer service out out there. They can log service requests and then really interface on a lot of the support that Scott needs. And so looking at this kind of being in a a grade range of level three, it's a salary range of about forty-nine thousand to sixty-four thousand dollars, and then there's some fringe benefits included as well. And some of you will recall that that we used to have a project coordinator slash deputy clerk when Kate White was here. And so she went on to Holland Township and is doing some great work for them. And then those project management and coordinator duties kind of got added on to my role when I was in the director of planning and zoning position. When we brought Luke on, we didn't have those duties included in the job description. Now, by me having that position, I, the salary range was more. So Luke's in a a salary range dedicated to this planning and zoning. And so that it was about a twenty thousand dollar savings just on the salary side. Obviously, there's some fringe benefit side of it, too. So so we do have some offset or some costs that we were paying already before that will help with with some of this. Again, we've had this budgeted. We have the dollars there to do it and sustain it. Took a look at kind of how Douglas is set up, given a comparable city nearby and how they're functioning. They actually added a a role very similar to this a few years ago, or several years ago now. And that person's actually kind of grown into a a point where they're now kind of considering them a project manager, and they've grown in the role and and done really well for for them. So I think we're in line in in this request with what our our neighboring communities are kind of seeing, what their needs were and how they're staffed. And I I think we're we're ready to move forward with an additional hire if if council's supportive.
Thanks for that. Questions, discussion, Chris?
How do you?
How do you look?
How do you really feel, Chris?
Oh, this is, this is just great.
Awesome. Other comments, questions?
Appreciate the physical requirements and work environment. I read through that. You did a great job putting that together to make sure that this person knows that they're going to be in the office, working on the office, and then off also on the ground. And and so I think this is is going to be a great flexible position that's going to help out all the staff. So.
I think it's written very well. First thing that goes through my mind whenever somebody wants to do incremental hiring is why do we need to spend this money? Are we growing? Are we doing, are we generating more income, blah, blah, blah? And so while Ryan was going through his dialogue, I just, I went back and I thought of, one, my meeting with Scott with you, Chris, how overwhelmed he was. And then, two, the the project workload that we have coming up, meaning all of the infrastructure work that's going to be done. I think it's going to put our DPW head underwater if he doesn't get some support. So I'm 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 fully agree and fully behind this and just want to get it out there.
Yeah, a hundred percent support. Mayor, I mean, you know, I think this goes to the earlier discussion. This increases accessibility of staff onsite at City Hall. So I think that's ultimately good.
Yeah, I think it's long overdue. You know, just looking at some of our strategic planning priorities when we're talking about things like parking, project coordinator could, you know, hit the ground running on something like that, and we could really use the help because DPW is a small staff, and I think it would, it'd be fantastic. I think a lot of our priorities would get going a little bit quicker if we had this position filled. So I'm looking forward to it.
Russ?
I'm in support of this at a high level. But as I look at this, a couple of things that come to mind is, in speaking with a little bit of experience with the city, is that the superintendent of DPW had been a primarily on the road, working with the staff. And I think Bruce Simonson, for those of you that may have known Bruce, was out on the road with the staff all day, teaching people how to work their equipment, teaching people how to do things, you know, mentoring and so forth, and that was very effective. What I'm struggling with is there seems to be far more administrative, and you alluded to it, far more administrative things being put on the superintendent's plate that I wonder, do we really understand the critical nature of those administrative responsibilities? And and where I'm going with this is that do we really quite understand what the role of the DPW superintendent really is? I mean, I can look at some of these, I can think, well, I can remember when the manager used to do that. I can remember when the manager used to do that. I can remember when the manager used to do that. So what I'm trying to get my head around is have things grown that exponentially that a hundred thousand dollar investment? And not to say that the city doesn't need something, but what's the data to support the need for this? We talk about tickets. We talk about the number of requests coming in. Where's the data to show us the number of things that are crossing the superintendent's desk that warrant this investment? And two is, you know, what are the things that maybe the superintendent has on his plate? I don't know that are administratively related that really ought to need, should be removed and maybe be removed to this position to allow that position to get back out on the road and in the street with the employees. I mean, that's that's the critical nature in my experience of that position. So if this moves us towards that, I'm in support of it. But I just still also question whether we are in not just that position, but generally is focused as a city to make sure we're focused on the right things, and we're not doing extra work for the benefit of doing extra work.
Yeah.
So that, does that make sense what I'm?
No, it does. And I'm I'm aware of that 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 history. What I'll say is that, you know, the the job description for Public Works here hasn't changed in many, many years. And if you look at it, the duties, there are a ton of administrative duties that are in that job description, and they make sense. If you're leading a department of public works and there's a ton of, you know, budget areas that relate to public works and a ton of items that relate to the Public Works Department, you know, so the duties that that Scott Herbert is working on today, especially the administrative duties, are duties that have been in his job description for many years. I get that over time, that position and maybe the previous superintendent maybe had a different skill sets and, you know, things were done differently, especially as as maybe the city was in a different spot. And and as it grew, obviously, things become more complex, and there's a lot of infrastructure needs that we have, and there's a lot to maintain as we added more parks and and the expectations and number of service requests have grown dramatically. In fact, I I have Scott, you know, tracking the number of service requests that he's receiving each month, and I don't have it in front of me, but his service requests the last couple of months, which makes sense because we're getting more into season, have just blown up, you know, dramatically, even just managing some of that and the. It just blown up dramatically, even just managing some of that and the customers that are coming in and talking with them. I mean, that's a big, big job in and of itself. You know, if you're managing an apartment and it's in your area of expertise, there's administrative work involved in that. And so this position is not intended to totally free Scott up to where he's totally working on the road and isn't involved administrative duties. That's a discussion that I've had with him. He knows that. That's not what this is intended to do. But it is intended to help free him up more to where he does have more opportunity to go out and assist his team with some training in the field. And he has more opportunity to actually go around and check on some things and make sure that some of the work is being done to a certain quality and standard that he sets, which is quite high. So it's just, I think, trying to provide a little bit better balance for him. Like, you know, there's maybe a swing from completely field to a lot more administrative than field to, all right, what's that right balance?
Yeah, thank you very much. And I look at bullet point number three, log service requests. The city needs to purchase an application that does that automatically for all citizens and not just for DPW. I've mentioned this several times in my time on council. There's several products out there that are off-the-shelf apps that the city could purchase to track all of this. And I think this position would benefit greatly, as our citizens would benefit greatly from tracking that data more efficiently and routing it to the appropriate desk at City Hall for resolution. So I think if we're going to make this job successful, we need to provide the tools to be able to do that. And I would say we need to move forward on some type of application to be able to manage that. And not just for the benefit of this position, but the other city departments as well. That should go hand in hand with just making this technically competent, not the person, but making us technically competent to track these requests. Because that will then tell us the data. You know, we know there's more coming in. Well, what's the number? How many are coming into the city, to whom? And what's the completion? What's the lag time? Close lag is what we call in my office. How long does it take between that request and when it's closed? That data is important for us to be able to make these decisions as well as maybe help our staff out and help you out, presumably as a manager.
Yeah, we are gathering that data now. We haven't historically, but we have it. In fact, the, you know, when I asked Scott to find a way to start tracking these things last year, you know, he thought and evaluated some tech options. And we also discussed whether good old fashioned Excel spreadsheets are more straightforward and there's less of a learning curve and there's less inputs. And if that was the direction that he wanted to go. He planted on the spreadsheets and in fact, what he came up with looks very nice. It's very clean. It's quick. It's simple, easy to work with. So I think, you know, we are collecting the data. It is, I appreciate that there's other tools out there that can help as well. And if Public Works feels like those are going to help them be better at what they do, I'm all ears on that too and appreciate your support of that. But I think what he's come up with is good and going to give us a lot. It's given me a good picture so far, even just in this five-month period. And really, when you see it on paper, you know, they have a huge punch list.
Yeah, I'd love to see that. My idea is at a much higher level, not just DPW. Not just DPW.
So while we're, so we have, it sounds like everybody's supportive of this. So we can put that on, just as we're talking about priorities and what people are up to. At a coming workshop, Ryan and I have talked about re-bringing our priorities back to the fore because we're about ready to enter the new fiscal year. And we've had some stuff come up. You know, we've had Dark Sky. We've had, I think Russ mentioned Hoffman Street. And so want to take another look at those priorities and make sure, because as we discussed at our strategic offsite, we left that with a full plate. And if we're adding things and we need to look at, well, what are we going to not do? So I just, I think it'll be valuable for us. And maybe that's something we do a couple of times a year at least, just to check in, to see where we are. And that will help keep life manageable for staff. So, well, as manageable for staff as it can be. Okay, well, great. Thanks, Ryan. So then we will get to six C, which is the Holland Street sign. Ryan, do you want to tee that up? I know we've talked about this a few times and kind of catch us up to where we are now. And then Gregory and I know Chris has raised what the concerns are there.
Yeah, I think when the sign was damaged, I think by a second time last year, we, Public Works got some quotes to replace the sign as is and replicate it and do another wooden sign of the same look and feel right at Holland and Blue Star. I think the cost of that was nearly twenty thousand dollars. At the time, that was over our purchasing limit. We didn't have dollars budgeted for it. And so we workshopped it with you as a council and kind of had a discussion about, do you want to replace what's there or would you rather have a larger discussion about? There was interest in adding some wayfinding signage similar to what Douglas has done. And there's been interest, or now refresh our city logo and kind of our brand and look. And really, all those go hand in hand. If you're going to refresh your logo and your brand, you kind of want your new signage to match up with it as well. I mean, this is a big investment in dollars in signage that's going to last for many, many years. And so what I understood the consensus to be was to head down that path. We didn't have dollars budgeted for that last fiscal year. We've discussed it at your strategic planning session in January. You approved those priorities. We've included dollars in the budget that would allow us to work on that logo redesign, work on some wayfinding signage and options, refresh our website, kind of goes along with that as well. So we have dollars, and then we actually have some actual physical dollars budgeted to actually fabricate some signs and install some signs as well. So all of that's included in your budget for next year. Obviously, that budget is not approved yet and we haven't begun that fiscal year. And so I know it's an area where folks want to see some signage back up. I'd love to see it there too, because I love seeing that sign as I came in each day. And so I understand the importance of it. But I think it's a process that, you know, to get there. So that's the kind of the process and the way that I see it happening is once you approve your budget, we'll put together some requests for proposals to reach out to some firms, get some pricing on, hey, what is it going to cost to come up with some different logo options, some different kind of branding kit options, some different signage options? I think it's going to be a discussion that a lot of people are going to have a lot of opinions on. And you're going to want to take your time to gather feedback and wrestle with the different options yourselves. We'll work through that process, assuming you all land on a logo and some branding. Then we'll be able to actually go out and get bids to do signs in certain areas. So it's going to be a pretty big project. I've talked with Douglas. I've talked with the township about kind of what they had into it. And I've looked at some of their requests for proposals and some of the costs that they had involved with that. And Scott's talked with John Moxie about some costs that are involved with a project like this as well. So that's kind of my plan. If the council has a desire to go in a different direction, you want that sign at Holland and Blue Star replicated and put back there, we'll work on that as well. I defer to you, so.
Real quick, I want to thank you for adding that to the agenda for my request. And I understand that we'd had conversations already and we talked about branding. And I'm looking at everything on our agenda. I know our budget will be approved shortly. So it won't be that long before we approve our next budget. And I just wanted to make sure that this is on the agenda so we get the ball rolling on this. The reason being is that we've got tourism season coming up. And I don't think that this sign needs to wait until we find a new logo and go through a branding process. Because that's going to take a while, like you said. I think we've already got a great brand and a great branding idea with the sign that we have coming into town at Lake Street. And that's the paint palette. And I think that I could get on board with doing something very similar to that look with the paint palette on it for that sign, even if we decide to do a new logo for the city of Sagatuck, something like this, you know. In fact, maybe even go with the palette, much like how Holland has the tool on all of their signages. But I think that if we did something that was very similar to the sign at Lake Street and that kind of a look, and we took that in, I've had signs made before, so I know it's not a lot of administrative duty to call and get a quote from several sign companies. In fact, I know Robert Kraus, he does a wonderful job on signs as well. And I think I just want to move forward with this. I don't think that we should wait until we decide to rebrand our logo. I don't think it's that much of a need. I think the sign needs to be there as soon as possible because of the flow of traffic that we have here in town. And it's a main artery. It's the second biggest artery into Sagatuck. And with a lot of new people coming to town, as we've seen our tourism grow, I think it's important to make sure that folks know that that's the way to get into town.
Yeah, I agree with Gregory. I think the whole palette thing, the Arc Coast, I mean, it's just kind of resonates with tourists and ourselves. And again, we can do that whole trademarking on down the road. But if we could just get, whether it's Robert Kraus or whomever, just a couple of ideas using the palette. The other options are to go with something like this. Or if you drive in, the sign that used to be there, followed by the Riverside Cemetery, followed by North Street, they're all that wooden thing. So we can do that look again too and just replicate what was there. But I like the idea of the palette sign from that entrance and this.
And I think the sooner the better. I don't, the wayfinding project, I feel like that with everything else that we've got going on, I don't know how much we're going to get into that this year, you know, once we pass the budget. I know what's on your plate. I see it. We had our strategic planning meeting. We had a lot. Now, you know, this particular sign was talked about. And we, again, we talked about the whole branding thing. I just think that this sign is important to get out there before we get into that discussion.
So you would want, just council in general, like RFPs done for just the sign? Is, I mean, I'm hearing that from you, wanting to have RFPs done on just that sign. And the idea is like having people put forward something that would be artistic and something or exactly like it used to be? Or what are you hoping for?
You know, I would like to see the Sagatuck sign, our main sign coming in, I'd like to see a replica. You know, whether it be a wooden replica, you know, or something done by Robert Kraus, but a very close replica of the palette, the word Sagatuck just as it is. If that's too much money, if we decide that that's going to cost us too much, then let's go back with what we had, like Chris said, just a wooden sign.
I think the idea, pardon me real quick, just making something sturdier because it kept getting taken out. So, you know, having something with a little whatever we need to do to make it sturdier because it kept getting hit.
Well, it got hit a couple of times within a year or two. It lasted for many, many years before that.
Yeah, we just had to keep repairing it, but I'm wondering if there's something sturdier to make it, you know, last a little.
I feel like we're solving for two things. One is, do people know how to get to Sagatuck? And two is our brand. And so, and I think if we're going, and I think we're overdue for a brand refresh, especially when we look at where our neighbors are. And just be, and it may well be the palette we come up with, but I think it's worth looking at that. And if we're going to redo the website, which we've budgeted for this year, you know, invest in the website. I think it makes sense to look at that. And if it's just people can't find Sagatuck, is there a way, I mean, can we do both of those? And maybe the Holland Street sign is something temporary. I mean, because truthfully, most people who don't know their way around, I think probably use GPS. So, which is not to say if we need a sign there temporarily, but I think we should, I think we are solving two different problems.
I think that was my second, my second idea was that, you know, if council didn't have a consensus to put a sign there, much like our sign at Lake Street, if we could have something there temporarily. Just like I said, because of the increased traffic, I expect us to add this year, I think at least something there.
It'll keep people off the roundabout.
Right, it'll keep people, yeah.
I think we're overcomplicating this. I think it's very simple. That palette sign used to be at the north end of town. That was over the road, over Holland Street as you drove in. It was moved down to the south side back in, I forget what year. So to put up another similar sign on the spot where that Sagatuck sign was, in keeping with that palette sign, most folks would go, that's cool. That's recognizing, and whether that becomes our icon or not, I don't know. But by nature, it's probably going to become our icon because of it's, everybody loves the sign. So to me, it's real simple. I'm prepared to make a motion on Monday night to direct the city manager to contact the sign company to come up with a concept for a wooden sign or something, whatever amount of money we want to spend to get a sign back quickly. I mean, I don't, I think it's that simple. I don't think we need RFPs. I don't think we need all of that. I mean, just assign a couple of council members to take the lead on it and get some information back and present it to council and let's go. To me, it's that simple. The whole logo and everything else is a whole different project. To me, just replacing the sign with a palette sign or something similar to it, most people can go, that makes a lot of sense. That's cool. It's that simple.
I have just one quick question, Madam Mayor. Is the rebranding on our priority list?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the idea between behind, you know, it kind of starts with the logo and coming up with kind of a branding kit. I mean, most communities, you know, I get that it's not always an immediate change everything, but you know, their their new signage is, it matches, right? And our existing, just like you know, our existing signage matches, right? So the signage that's at North Street matches the signs that are out here at Cook Park and at Coffin Park. And that wooden look and feel has kind of been our brand. And that was the discussion that we had last year was like, do you want to continue with that? Or do you want to look at something different?
So it took Douglas how many years to come up with their branding? You know what I mean? That can be a very long discussion, you know? And so what I'm thinking is that I don't think the branding thing is, with everything else on our plates, I realistically don't think that that's something that we're going to get done by the end of the year. And so if we could just have something there, I'm flexible. What I'd really like to see again was what Russ mentioned with the paint, with the paint palette, just like that sign. If we could get an artist to do the same thing, would love to have the neon. To have a replica would be awesome. But if we could have something that looks very similar to it, folks identify that as Sagatuck. And even if we ended up doing a different branding and a different logo and decided to do wayfinding with that logo, I think that's great. But again, I don't foresee that happening this year.
A couple of questions. Where is the township on this? This is township property. Have they basically said, Sagatuck, you have carte blanche to put any sign you want there?
Yeah, I don't know if it's carte blanche, but I know when it was damaged and removed that, you know, Daniel was wanting to kind of work together on it. And yes, so.
This is their property, so it probably would make sense to work with them. Because it is their property. I think it's interesting that the sign got hit by cars leaving town on two occasions. And so I'm worried that it will happen again. I know it lasted for a long time with nothing happening, but the fact that people have hit it twice makes me think, I think to the Mayor Pro Tem's point, that we need to maybe protect it with landscaping or something. Certainly don't want to make it more dangerous to a driver. You know, I don't want anybody to get hurt. I mean, people are lucky they didn't get seriously hurt on two occasions. I think I'd want to think a little bit more. I mean, I think all seven of us here really like, I mean, I love the palette. I think all seven of us love the palette sign. But I have to think about what the community might think. I mean, with the people of Hollywood, California, want to have a lot of little replicas of the iconic Hollywood sign all over LA. You know, would people in New York City want a little mini statue or half-size Statue of Liberties throughout New York? I'm not sure what the answer to that is. So I think it feels, this is a situation where I feel like us as a council just saying, hey, let's roll one real quick and do it. Without really consulting with the community, it feels a little bit rushed to me that, you know, we've got the best idea. That it's the palette sign. I love the palette sign. But once again, are folks going to think we're diminishing from the iconic sign by making a replica?
Well, that's where I get to the two issues where, and if we need to get people pointed to Sagatuck, we could do that probably pretty inexpensive. If we're solving a directional confusion, then that's a pretty easy solve without limiting our option. What I would hate to do is if, if we do want to look at our brand, why would, I mean, that sign must cost a lot of money. Why would we invest that much money and then come up with something different potentially? So we could solve a wayfinding issue near term as we also begin to look longer term. What do we want our website to look like? What do we want our signs to look like? I just don't want to spend money if we're going to come up with something different. And, you know, it is true. I think we do want to get the community involved. And if we're going to, you know, that would be something that they would care about. And maybe they would want the palette, but maybe not.
I'm agnostic. I love the palette sign. And if that's what everybody wants, that's fine. I'm agnostic. I love the palette sign. And if, if that's what everybody wants, that's fine. What I can have proposed, because I went out and fixed it the first time it got hit, and I did a terrible job, but at least I was able to get it back together. I think if I get for you or the former, I can't remember, it was the former manager or the former mayor, that, you know, I, sorry, guys, I just got sick of seeing it laying there, so I started putting it back together. And I suggested, you know, it's pretty, it was a pretty simple sign. You know, it's like, you know, maybe that's one for the folks, the kids at the lunch shop to do, you know, over at the high school. And and there was some interest there, but obviously the school year's ending, so that's not going to answer your, address your concern. But, you know, is it, is it like, do we just kind of go back to what we had quickly and easily? I mean, because it really was a base, very basic sign. I mean, I think you could get the letters at Hobby Lobby, you know.
Right.
If, if Councilmember Gardner and I can be trusted to repaint the radar station.
Right. I'd be willing to help with that, too.
We could, we could probably do something really simple, and I, and I don't think the township's going to blink if, if, if the same old sign went back. You know, and if it gets taken out by another car, you know, we lost maybe 500 bucks.
Actually, the sign was damaged a few years prior, and I think it was vandalism, and I did fix it one time that I was decorating. So that, so that was, that was, that was several years prior. And then we got into the point where there were two in a row within a year or two where it got hit.
Joe, we haven't heard from Joe yet, so.
If we're going to go through the exercise of looking at our brand, then I would say do something temporary. I mean, nothing would make me happier. My personal preference would be to put a palette sign up, make that our brand, but it's not up to me. We need to get input from the community. Let them tell us what they want. In the meantime, I happen to agree. And if it was cost neutral, if it was the same cost to put a palette sign up there as just any other temporary sign, I'd say put the palette sign up there just so consistent, and it's a great looking sign. But I have a feeling it's not going to be, but why don't we look at it and come up with a couple of options and see what the cost is. But for sure, you know, if, if we're going down this path, and I think we are, that's what I'm hearing, of branding, then we should minimize whatever expenses we're making in putting signs up until we know what we're going to, what we want the town to look like.
That's a good point, Jeff.
Yeah, if, if we want to get something up for tourist season, you know, right away, it seems like we should just fix the old sign and put that up while we have another sign made.
Right.
You know, because if, if you put it out to Robert Kraus or anybody like, it's going to take time.
And it's going to cost money, right.
You know, and then we need ideas where people, the community can get involved in that sort of thing. But if it's a matter of just putting something up in a quick fashion where we fix the old one, or like you said, there's letters at Hobby Lobby that look exactly like that, you know.
I think that'd be a great project you and I and Russ could work on.
I love that.
I'd be happy to do that with you, gentlemen.
I can dig a hole.
I mean, honestly, I'm not joking. The, the letters were pre-made letters that you find at a hobby, they really were.
Yeah, they were, yeah.
Manchester Cemetery and the miniature golf course and the North Street.
I'm going to go back to one thing from our, our strategic planning session. A couple of, several times we've been having council members suggest the, the how. So I think we figure out what we want to get done, but then leave it to staff, whether it's sign, you know, a temporary sign. And if staff wants council members to build it, that's great, but it's not our call. Russ?
Madam Mayor, I would suggest something this council has done in the past is that we assign three council members to study this and come back the next meeting with ideas.
I think we have, we, we ask our staff how to do that, Russ.
I, I disagree. I think this is something that three council members could easily come back with some recommendations on what we do.
I think there's, respectfully, I think there's enough of a difference of opinions among the seven of us that that's not going to work.
And you know what? I, so seriously, council's role is the what and the why, and staff's role is the how. And if our city manager wants council members to work on a sign, he can bring that to us, but that is not something it, that is our job to dictate.
I'll let the manager know that I'm willing.
So would we all agree that we want something quickly that's maybe temporary, that could be inexpensive? Do we all agree to that aspect of it?
And one other point of, I think, I think hopefully agreement, let's just recreate what was there.
Yeah, I agree, Scott.
And it answers problem, I don't think the Douglas, I'm sorry, I don't think the township will have a problem because we're just doing like for like.
Yeah, and then we let everyone know that when we start doing the rebrand, that that sign might look something different. But, but we do the, we do the long-term thing later. This could be a short-term solution.
We ask our, I think Ryan has heard, we want something temporary, we want something cost-effective. We don't want to be investing long-term. And then he can, and that one option to consider might be replicating the old sign, but not the only option. And he can come back to with a recommendation.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, good, thank you.
The township to see if they're refined with a replication that's considered temporary and maybe not as high quality as far as, I mean, because Kraus, I mean, they gave us, they were the ones that gave us the quote to replace what was there, and that was almost 20,000 dollars. Three council members who have the woodworking abilities to recreate something that, that looks like that, and the township's go with it.
It was cardboard sign.
Give me a circular saw.
I want to kind of videotape the process.
I think it'd be quite, I think it'd be great. I, I would look forward to that.
Okay. Hey, fun fact, airports, small airports cut wedges in the fence posts by the runway, so if a plane hits it, they snap right off and then they stand them right back up. We'll do that with our signs.
Okay, that brings us to public comments. Renee, you've been so patient.
Really briefly, before we move on.
Did you enjoy all the conversation?
Jake has something.
Sorry, I wanted to chime in really quickly before we go into, into public comment. I, I was able to ping Lizzie. She's at a track meet right now and expresses her condolences for not being able to be present at this meeting. She's 100% on board with the proposed change to the personnel policy that you have and doesn't think that an amendment to the ethics policy is necessary. So I think we should be all set.
Good.
Thank you.
I'm glad we were able to do that. Thank you, Jacob.
Yeah, of course.
Okay, Renee, back to you.
Hi, Renee Zeta, 985 Park Street, down by past Mount Baldy. And I am here this evening, as you probably all know, because of that place right there that is near and dear to my heart. Every spring I come back and I climb Mount Baldy, and unfortunately I don't see any improvements, and it just keeps deteriorating. I feel, and I would think most of you would agree, that besides Oval Beach and Mount Baldy, they are the most two visited and iconic sites in Sagatuck. And it saddens my heart that when I climb up those stairs and the platform, it is in just deplorable conditions. And I've been here the last three seasons where I've come to attend concerning, attend a meeting concerning Mount Baldy. And yes, we're going to do this, we're going to do this. And now this is like the fourth summer, nothing other than the trees that I got the Interact Club to plant up on the hill has been done. I don't know what the delay is. I would love to know. And also, I would like the council to consider when you're, I've been told that now the next year, you guys are planning on doing the platform and a new restroom. People don't come to Mount Baldy for a restroom. They come there to climb the stairs. And I just would appreciate if you would reconsider maybe your priority of holding off on the restroom, if it's budget or what, and doing the stairs. Because literally I have, I sweep the stairs sometimes. It's just wonderful, like, exercise. I, I snip some of that, the weeds that are killing the, the stair, the wood. And, you know, I just would love to see other people just as passionate as me. I, is, can I ask the question, why it didn't get done last, this past winter? The platform and the restroom?
This isn't really a Q and A session, but we can talk with you. We can, okay, have, you know, yeah.
But I really would appreciate some priority put there. Again, it is the, being that I live down there, there are school buses, there are, the, the parking lot is in a shamble on the holiday weekends because there's not enough parking on the beach. So they climb the hill, and it, it has become a safety hazard to our community.
Great, thank you, thank you. Okay, with that, we need a, oh, I'm sorry, Dan, you weren't just here for fun, were you?
Pardon me?
You weren't just here for fun, were you? You wanted to make a comment?
No. Most of you, I think I better way to spend two hours on a Wednesday afternoon, like, sleeping with me, none of them. See you, Renee. Nice chatting. I'm here to update you on the progress with the fire district budget. As you know, the presentation to the three jurisdictions was made at the fire station on Monday, four o'clock. And shortly, actually, in the same room, after that meeting was adjourned and then the fire board regular meeting was getting to happen, the township had a quorum there, and they adopted the budget formally there. And then Tuesday evening, you know, with time it started, Douglas had their regular council meeting, and they also adopted the fire district budget. Both, both jurisdictions unanimous votes. So I just, I wanted to make sure if you didn't, I assume you have copies?
I brought, I brought everybody's copies, so they have them here.
If you had any questions, and if they're, you know, in the weeds kind of questions, they should go directly to either the chief or the deputy chief, and they'll answer them by email or whatever. If there's anything generally that I can provide, it was a, it was, I thought, I know, you said as well, it was a useful meeting, not just for the budget stuff, but related to the budget stuff, there's forward planning relative to the south station, relative to funding, relative to village and so forth. So if you have questions, I'll happily try, or as I say, feel free to get in touch with the guys.
And maybe if people have specific budget questions, we could funnel them through the city manager to, so that we don't have seven people emailing the chief? Would that?
Either way, it doesn't bother me to, and I don't think it bothers the chief to get questions directly online or email, but whatever you want to do, up to you guys.
Yeah, and I did tell the chief that we would have this on your, your Tuesday regular meeting agenda for consideration of a vote, so.
Yeah.
And then we, then going forward from that, I think it's June 16th, but don't hold me to that. We'll hold a public hearing on the budget, and then the fire district will approve and adopt, officially adopt the budget. So that's how that goes from here.
Great.
Thank you for your service, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay, can someone make a motion to go into closed session?
I move that we go into a closed session. Okay. Motion by me to move into a closed session pursuant to MCL 15 dot 268E and H to discuss a confidential written legal opinion regarding the ongoing lawsuits filed against the city by Dune Ridge, captioned Dune Ridge versus the City of Sagatuck, case number 22-65713-CK, and Dune Ridge versus the City of Sagatuck, case number 21-64709CZ, regarding trial or settlement strategy, which if discussed in an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect.
Whoever wants it, I think it was me.
All right, roll call. I'm assuming it's just roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Bar?
Yes.
Bean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Funcy?
Yes.
Yes. We have motion carries. Bye, Ernie. Bye, bye, Ernie. I'll be home for supper in a little bit.
Let's go check the time, it's going well here. Nice job.
All right, we are out of closed session, which takes us to, takes us to correspondence. You're hearing two of me, yikes. And then the constant chatter in my head. No correspondence, council comments. Joe, you want to start?
Hi. Good meeting. Welcome summer, doesn't feel like it. I am looking forward to reading this and digesting it. And hopefully we'll have a good discussion on it during either our council meeting or next workshop. So it looks like there's a lot in here. Other than that, wish everybody a happy weekend.
Um, yes, first of all, I wanted to let every, wanted to thank the staff for finding the, the money and got the garden club back on track with our, with our yearly donation. Only $1,500 the city pays to have this beautiful, the beautifying that they do throughout town, not just the pots, but they do the memorial area and other spots around Sagatuck as well. Jane Dryer texted me this morning or yesterday, we changed their planting from Wednesday to Friday. So I'll be there with the kids Friday morning, and then we'll do the little kickoff at the, the SCA or the, the parking lot next to the SCA, and the kids will be planting all the pots. So that'll be done for Memorial Day weekend. Also tomorrow, want to remind everybody at the Sagatuck Douglas History Center, they invite you to the History Center at Mount Bald Head Park. They're going to be opening, and they'll have hot dogs tomorrow from 5:00 to 7:00 PM and showcase the museum for the first time. They've got a new art display from the Sagatuck Douglas Art Club, and the event's free of charge. It's a nice kickoff to open up the pump house. And a happy, happy Memorial Day to everybody coming up. I hope everybody has a great time this weekend. They're still looking for a few more volunteers for intersections to be marshals. You can get ahold of the voices if you're interested, and, and they'll get you a spot to help out with the parade on Monday morning.
Great, thanks.
Thanks, Councilman, for mentioning Memorial Day. Yeah, we, we feel like we might be a bit short staff, so thank you for that. Once again, I'm going to probably say this on Tuesday again, because I don't want it to be missed by the community, but Ryan, your team, DPW in particular, did an absolute amazing job with, from what I've heard, was a storm that the likes of which folks in this town have not seen in a long, long time. The ability to get the streets back open, to marshal the crews, the fact that Scott, you know, had a professional, like, pro, pro-level tree service on speed dial in his phone, you know, because, you know, they've only got a 36-inch bar on their chainsaw, and some of the trees that went down were massive. So I just can't thank you guys enough for the work you did. I mean, just to get things back up and running, really, like in the course of a day, was frankly remarkable. I'm, I'm just so impressed with, with that. And I'll probably bring it up again next week. But yeah, good meeting and, and thanks.
Echo Scott's comments. So the only thing to add is that congratulations to the Sagatuck class of 2025 graduating tomorrow. So a lot of families will be in town for that, and congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, I'll be tomorrow morning serving breakfast with the seniors. I don't know if Councilmember Stanton will be there.
I will be.
Yes. And my wife Jennifer tonight is getting everything ready, along with some of the other mothers, so we'll be looking forward to that tomorrow. The other thing is Monday, Memorial Day, personal note, my father, Bob, is 86 years old, will be the sergeant in arms. So when you see the gentleman walking out to place the flowers at the memorial, that's my dad. I'll be weeping when he does that. I'm very proud of my dad. He's a Coast Guard veteran, and for him to be able to participate is important. And just a reminder of how humble I am about the service that these people have provided to our community and to our nation. So please give him a round of applause on Monday. Thank you.
Thanks, Russ.
I, I will echo the comments made about the city and what a wonderful job, what a wonderful job you did. Fire Department, too. I mean, it was a horrible storm. It was a scary storm. And I, when the sirens went off, I really didn't hear it till the dog came up, jumped on the bed and went, oh, my God. Great meeting today, and I echo Memorial Day. My husband is an 81 veteran of Vietnam and served in the Armed Helicopter Unit, and we will be there at the parade, and I gladly be a, a person standing at the, at the street level, letting them know when, where.
Great, thanks. Yes, adding my thanks as well for all of the storm work. Congratulations to Cass and Charlotte and their parents. It's a big darn deal. Yeah, good meeting. Thanks. Be safe, everyone. And can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.